Good evening. Welcome to the May 4th special meeting of the Environmental Quality Control Board. I will now call the meeting to order. Nick, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, thank you.
All right, Andrew Hurt, begin.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Director Smidl, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Board Member Showalter. Board Member Messetti?
I'm here.
Board Member Perrell?
Here.
Board Member Showalter?
Here.
Board Member Horning?
Here.
And Board Member Allen O'Leary marches absent. Thank you.
At this time, members of the public may address the Environmental Quality Control Board regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the Board cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Have staff received any written comments on tonight's meeting?
Yes, we received one written comment, and it has been made available for the public.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak at this time?
Patty Senical from College Park East. I'm going to speak to a non-agendized item, and that is, the notice has been out now for about a week on the draft DEIR for the Lamson project, or Lamson Park Place project from Los Alamitos. And so I am just wanting to bring this forward, that it's out. We also have the Seal Beach project on the website that's been updated. And so, from a College Park East perspective, we have two major projects in close proximity to each other. And so, the concern is, two major projects, they need to be looked at for cumulative impacts. They're so close to each other, and that is everything from public health, to the safety, the traffic, and our general welfare for College Park East. And these projects are, not only are they in close proximity, but we have, Lamson, as you know, is just a two-lane on each side, very small roadway, and we have a lot of incidents over there now. And so, I look forward to the Environmental Quality Control Board having you guys look at the DEIR for both projects and offering comments. And then, I think it would be appropriate for our city to offer comments that are due by June 10th to the Los Alamitos Council, or their Public Works, or wherever it belongs over there. But I think it's important that our city follow this project very closely for College Park East. Again, it's right across the street. It's two lanes over, right across the street from us, so it impacts us a lot. And so, I just want to make sure it's on the radar, and that we allocate time to make sure that the draft DEIR for both projects are looked at cumulatively, and that we also can do that timely. So, it needs to be comments to Los Al by June 10th, is what I read in the IR. And also, I've read through a lot of it, and if I'm reading it correctly, for the noticing, and then I was reading on the sewer part, they have a lot of analysis on the sewer system, so it looks like they're going to need to, this is Lamson Park Place, it looks like they're going to need to tie into our sewer system. And so, again, how does that work? Do we have the capacity? I know we have an aged system, we're already talking about, we need to replace a lot of our system, it's just useful life issues. And so, what are the impacts of our sewer system and having another project? And does the other project need that capacity? So, just the whole sewer system, because we've been talking about it so much, it comes to mind as well. So, just wanted to bring that to the Board, and hopefully you guys can weigh in and review and offer comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. So, by motion of the Environmental Quality Control Board, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda, and provide an opportunity for any member of the Board or staff to request an item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Yeah, I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Director Smidl, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Board Member Showalter. Board Member Messetti?
Yes.
Board Member Perrell?
Here. Oh, yes, sorry.
Board Member Showalter?
Yes.
And Board Member Horning?
Yes.
Item passes unanimously, thank you.
So, there are no items on the consent calendar, no continued items. So, for scheduled matters, item A is an action to receive and file a geotechnical report from the First Street parking lot. Is there a report?
Thank you, members of the Board and staff. My name is David Spitz with the Public Works Department, and if it pleases the Board, I'll provide a quick report on the item before you. As you mentioned, the item that you do have here is a request from the City Council that the EQCB review, comment, if there are any comments, and file the attached geotechnic report on the First Street parking lot review. So, as we all know, we've had a lot of rains over this winter. You know, words like atmospheric river were used a lot to describe some of the storm events that we've seen. And some of these storm events, you know, they're getting bigger and larger year by year as we go, and we're having to react to some of the intensity of some of these storms, and hopefully try to provide good protection in the future. We had some storms in December that ended up causing water to overtop the beach down by the First Street jetties and inundate the First Street parking lot. Staff pumped out the parking lot, and afterwards noticed that there was an extremely large sinkhole, about eight spaces or so, 30 by 30 is a general estimate of the size of the sinkhole. Fearing that, you know, the public likes to get close to these kind of things, we issued a notice of emergency, a declaration of emergency, so that we could mobilize crews and repair that sinkhole as soon as possible. So, staff had Hardy and Harper, one of our on-call pavement contractors, come out to perform the repairs in early 2024. Staff also determined that, you know, there's one sinkhole here doesn't necessarily mean there might not be. And again, for the preservation of, you know, human life and safety, it was a good idea to bring out a geotechnic engineer to review the entire First Street lot, to see if there might be any other potential voids under the asphalt that could cause problems. So, staff brought on a geotechnic contractor, in this case, GMU engineers, a company that staff is very familiar with working with, we've worked with them on numerous projects in the past, and requested that they perform a ground-penetrating radar survey of the entire First Street lot. This technology, in essence, it's a system by which they have units on vehicles that emits radar pulses into the ground. And depending on what those pulses interact with, whether it be consistent material, whether it be some kind of solid object or voids, will emit radar pulses back to the receiving antennas on the vehicle, and they transmit different frequencies. All that information is taken back into the shop, put through a computer software program, and then the geotechnic engineers review that to determine if the wave durations happen to show what could be a void. We use this technology a lot when we're doing utility installations in roadways, because sometimes, you know, there are utilities that may have been abandoned for decades and decades that plans don't show anymore. And this system, this technology, generally brings those up, and it shows us where these, you know, underground pipes might be that we didn't know. So, in this technology that they utilize, they had two different systems. One is very, very accurate to about two feet down, and the other system is slightly less accurate, and it goes to about 10 feet down. And what the geotechnic contractor did is, they came in, we had them scheduled to come in very early on a Wednesday morning, about 5:30, 6:00 AM. The purpose of that is because it's the lowest tide, so there's the lowest chance of any groundwater causing any disturbances on the radio waves and frequency waves as they did their survey. And at the back of the report, there's an attachment that shows their path of travel, so to speak, through the entire parking lot, at about six-foot-wide swaths of radaring. They performed that on a Wednesday morning, and then had our results about a week later, where they concluded that they could not, through the use of their technology, find any detectable voids in the subsurface. Does not necessarily mean there aren't any, but it was not detected by this technology, which, at the very least, gives extra peace of mind to staff and the citizens that this parking lot, after the one sinkhole was fixed, is safe, to the best of the readily-available technology that we have. And we brought this item to City Council recently for approval, with the, with all other items a part of our post-flooding emergency. And that concludes my report, and open for questions.
So, now is the time for the Board to make comments, ask questions, and conduct discussion. Who would like to begin?
I'll start. I have a couple of questions. Has any sinkhole occurred previously to this particular site that anybody knows about?
I'll jump in on that. I've been here about 17 years, and in my time, there has not been any other detectable sinkholes that we've found. I ran the project where we rebuilt that parking lot back in 2011, give or take, where it was the old parking lot system, and now the spaces and the whole geometry were revamped, and did not find any during that construction project. Nothing came up during any utility installation, and haven't seen any beforehand.
Now, is there any stormwater drains in that area?
There are no subsurface storm drains in the area. It's very low. To put an underground storm drain wouldn't really have the hydrology to exit anywhere. So, the drainage system is just through percolation in either grassy areas, there's a couple of park and lounge areas, and the areas between the parking lots.
I noticed that in the report, under project background and description, it says the parking lot is paved with asphalt and concrete with planter areas. And I looked at the map, you know, the photographs, and it looks like the, I may not be sure, but it just looked to me like that the planter area, which is not paved, was integral to where that particular sinkhole was. So, I'm just wondering, did all the water drain into that particular area, and that was the hydraulic flow that caused the sinkhole?
I would say, you know, we've had many rains in decades, and that those areas partly drain the parking lot, not all of it. Most of the parking lot actually drains towards the grassy areas on the east side of the park, of the parking lot. Those areas do drain some of the parking lot, but during this current flood that we had, most of the water was pumped out towards the beach area, or over the Sangre River into the river.
So, it was actually pumped out?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, I just wondered if those are two consistent with what may have happened there, and that's why that happened, rather than there was a crack in the asphalt or something, it went through that particular avenue, and then, I'm just guessing, but I just didn't know if anybody had made a determination if it was like from the stormwater, or from something underground.
There is, it's very tough with the information we have to really make any concrete, you know, conclusions on what actually caused it.
Well, I went down there shortly after that storm, and it was all flooded, so that water's got to go somewhere. So, that's, and then I saw those planter areas, and I said, that must be the drainage system. So, now I guess, that was just my guess, so that's all the questions I have right now.
Nick?
So, there wasn't any plumbing or piping found near where the problem was?
I believe the only piping we might have had were just some irrigation lines, because those are planted areas.
Pretty shallow, okay.
Yes.
And this was ground-penetrating radar. Were there any treasure chests found?
No, unfortunately, no. Their conclusion was that-
We had pirates going back and forth for centuries, so.
Yeah, we asked them to specifically look for voids, and not necessarily any solids. So, they didn't find any substantial voids.
And no tribal burial sites?
Not during their radar survey, no.
Thanks.
Susan, did you have any comments?
Well, honestly, I put together a little presentation that I thought might help us put these questions in context, and help us think, and maybe, you know, come up with some recommendations and conclusions about the survey and about the whole situation. Can I indulge folks for a minute?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, all right, great. I promise I won't PowerPoint you to death. But let me just walk through these. Ah, oh, is that a pointer?
This is your remote, uh-huh.
Okay, I brought my own, but, let's see, how does this work? Oh, and it has a progressive, progressive on it too, so the pointer is this little, right here? No?
Yeah, it maybe doesn't-
Where's the pointer? Oh, okay, gotta actually hold it down.
Yeah, hold it down.
All right, thank you. Okay, so, yeah, thanks. I just thought, you know, it'd be great to talk about this together, so just to get started. I was thinking, okay, what are we supposed to do here? Like, when we sit, we've only had a couple of meetings that I've been involved in, of the Environmental Quality Control Board. So, you know, we're still trying to figure out what we're supposed to do. So, I thought it'd be helpful to go back to the code, where, you know, we were created in the Seal Beach municipal code, and it gives us, the code actually says what our powers and duties are. So, before we get started on the subject tonight, maybe just think about how we might use our powers and duties. So, I just highlighted a few things, regular meetings of the Environmental Quality Control Board, shall be held once a month. Our powers and duties are to study the environment of the city, and to investigate all threats to the maintenance of a high-quality, clean environment for the city. To report to the City Council on recommendations for legislation or other action deemed necessary, appropriate for the maintenance or improvement of a high-quality, clean environment for the city. And then, to report to the City Council as recommendations for legislation or other action deemed necessary or appropriate for the mitigation of threats to the maintenance of a high-quality, clean environment to the city. Just thought it'd be good to lay out our charter as we move forward. Oops, so, let me, go to the next slide. Okay, so, let's look at the First Street parking lot. How did all this happen, and, you know, what might be our concerns? So, going back to our anthropogenic, anthropogenic, human history of the site, I pulled out this fabulous photo, it's taken somewhere between 1936 and 1944, came from the Founder's Day. They published a whole bunch of historical photos in Seal Beach, it's really cool. So, there used to be a bridge, that ocean ab- bridge was abandoned, that crosses the river there, right near the river mouth. But right at the First Street parking lot, ah, there was a steam plant there. So, what happens when you have a steam plant sitting, you know, what is now a parking lot? Well, the steam plant obviously got abandoned, but did they abandon it completely? Or are there still pipes underneath the steam plant that they didn't necessarily remove and could have collapsed? Were there underground storage tanks there? Were there other kinds of basements that weren't properly filled and compacted? Because the collapse, or, you know, soil sinking into those buried things that weren't completely abandoned correctly, perhaps, would cause a sinkhole. And in fact, it's very frequent to cause a sinkhole. So, and I just say, that's one thing, I don't think the report actually took a look at, you know, the previous site use, and they probably should, before they start to study like that. So, there could be some things underground, for sure. And then, look at the hydrogeologic setting of the parking lot. So, I did kind of put the approximate sinkhole locations, let me see if I can do this.
I can see it.
Ah, right there, okay. And, of course, that's the river, there's a little flood shoal here, sand deposited. So, there is a lot of movement in the sand, a lot of movement of fluids and sand in the river, for sure, that could influence this parking lot. And then, interestingly, these two strips down here, we might call them planters, they're also known as swales. They help, when stormwater lands on the parking lot, they help direct some of that stormwater, they detain it, retain it, and send it back into the groundwater table, where it's useful for preventing saltwater intrusion, and we want to preserve groundwater, not run it off to the ocean. So, these swales, I think this was a 2012, maybe, or, it's a fairly recent project, where this parking lot got repaved and the swales were built. So, the parking lot is fairly much impervious material, except for the planters and the swales, okay? So, as I think you noted out earlier, these, this is soil, and it drains, and it's a tendency, and there's fine sediments in here, and the rest is impervious material. Okay. So, that's before the storm. And one more thing before we, you know, I was just, what causes sinkholes? We might want to talk about that as we're thinking. What caused this sinkhole, and have we done everything we can to prevent another one? Do we understand the processes by which it was created? I thought it'd be helpful to go through. How do sinkholes get formed? Well, basically, when you remove underlying soil from the surface, or fluids from that surface, fluids in the pore space of the soil, and that causes the surface to finally collapse. It's just you create a void underneath the surface, and things crash into the void. So, really, I think we've all seen these big, huge, well, caves, as well as sinkholes in Florida, because limestone, which Florida's mostly limestone, it dissolves in water. So, you have groundwater flowing through, or stormwater flowing through, and you send the rock into a solution, and it's just water underneath instead of rocks, so everything collapses. And that happens a lot, unfortunately, in Florida. Also, water line leaks here in Los Angeles basin, and this is a pretty common theme. You'll have a big old water line, and it's buried underneath the surface, and there'll be a leak in it, so pretty high-pressure water is coming out into the soil, pushing the soil into areas that where the soil is kind of uncompacted around it, and that creates, in fact, that's how this one got created. Actually, it was a dual, this is in Ventura County this year, car just collapsed right into this. It was a large water main broke, collapsed, and caused a sinkhole, and all the water moved all the soil away, and this car actually, no one was in it, thank goodness, but fell right in. So, that's pretty common. There's also groundwater pumping. If we, if we're pumping an aquifer or an oil-gas reservoir, a whole big lot, we're going to reduce the pressure in the pore space in the soil or the rock, and often you'll get a sinkhole, or at least a depression in the surface. Another subsurface conduits, like, say at that steam plant, there were some abandoned pipelines that were never filled or removed. They could collapse, the steel rots after a while, corrodes, and the pipeline collapses, and everything sinks in. Or same thing with, you'll see with underground storage tanks, if they had fuel, underground storage tanks there for filling the vehicles at the plant, or whatever, and it wasn't properly abandoned or filled, those will collapse. And then, underground structures, pipes, basements, vaults, tanks that aren't removed and aren't compacted appropriately. Just differential compaction, you have an area where you have very tightly-compacted soil, and someone came in and did some digging, and they replaced that with soil that wasn't compacted, that can actually cause a collapse. And also, I put on here tidal surge, and this was my biggest concern when we saw, when we saw the sinkhole, I actually thought we could possibly have a breach of the levee, underneath the levee from the river, and things could be washing out, which would be terrible. And so, I'm really glad the city went after and did the geophysical survey. I think that proved that most, you know, not without a doubt, but it proved to some reasonable level of assurance to us that, you know, that wasn't happening, the tidal surge. So, let me go to the next slide here. Yeah, so then the storm hit after that, of course, and I did notice there was tidal bore, tidal surge was observed in the river. You know, things are, tide was really coming in heavy, you could almost surf on it some places. And then, of course, the parking lot flooded, that was Friday, December 30th. And it's interesting, when you look at this, whoops, sorry, when you look at this, I can't operate this, I'm just being a silly person here, sorry. All right, so, so this is one of the swales, we saw one of the planter areas, and you can see there's a lot of sediment around here, it's like, oh, some of this is, you know, getting a little bit washed away, perhaps, just. And then, these photos are taken by Jonathan Furlong, I don't know him, I found them on Facebook, on Seal Beach Facebook page, and they're just so well-done, highly recommend you go look at it. But yeah, it really shows this whole parking lot, this, the restaurant area became an island. And this is on Saturday, so our crews got right out and pumped. We have two trucks out here and two pumps, and you can see these little lines, this is where they're discharging water back in the river, you can see it's quite a bit of water, it's, these are big, I think it's, this pump especially is a really big guy. Let me go to the next slide. And then, that's what it looks like, the discharge, Channel 7 came out, and I pulled this off of their website, there was a lot of water we had to remove to get that parking lot filled, and they worked on into the night, I commend them for doing so. These guys worked long and hard to get this water out of there. Just one more close-up, I think. Yeah, so you can see, interestingly, you can see, it's a little hard in here with all the lights on and everything, but these are the two pumps, and you can, they go out and discharge in the river. But the intake, and it's hard, like I said, to see this, but if you look at the actual photo on the Facebook page, take it off the video, it does pretty much look like this intake on this big honkin' pump is in that swell, in that swell in the parking lot. So, a concern would be that we might have been pulling a lot of sediment out of that planter. It's, if you, you can, can't really see it here, but this is exactly where the sinkhole is, exactly. So, let me go to the next slide. Okay. So, then the next day, we all came down and looked at this happening. So, remember, we saw the light pole in the last slide? The sinkhole is right, that's the last thing standing, and then the sinkhole starts. So, it was right where the pumping occurs, so we have to wonder, you know, did we actually pull so much water and sediment through those pumps that we caused this collapse? And if we did, you know, we did, and there's no, there's no one to get angry with or blame these guys who are working all night to try and keep the parking lot clear and keep it safe, so. But it's something that we have to consider, I think, as a possibility, so we don't do this next time. It might, it might possibly be a better idea to put the pump intake on the impervious materials, the parking lot, not so close to where the soil that could be pulled out. Okay, so, this is like, I took this from the geophysical report, the ground-penetrating radar report, and I just did go ahead and put that sinkhole in. I wish they had done, there's a few comments I'd like to make on the report itself, just so, next time if we ever have to do this again, and I hope we don't, we might get a little more useful data. But what made me really feel good about this is that there were lines of ground-penetrating radar between us and the river, and so that made me feel more confident, a little more confident, at least, that we haven't breached the levee. And, and, you know, it does, it does look like, you know, there's probably not piping along here, probably not, like a big, big old abandoned line that served as a conduit. There's so much sediment that had to get removed, that sediment has to go somewhere, so it's probably not likely that, you know, the river levee was breached. Go to the next slide. So, I just, I did take a picture of the filled area. I think one kind of lost opportunity we had was to take a look at the sinkhole with the geotechnical engineer before we filled it. We did recommend that, but I don't know, somehow it didn't, it didn't happen. And I'm sure there were safety concerns, they wanted to fill that hole as soon as they could, so no one fell into it, I'm sure. But the problem is, we wanted to learn what happened there, so that we don't have another hole later that someone might fall into. So, unfortunately, I think we missed out on some learning there, but I can understand what folks are thinking. An engineer can tell a lot when they look at the hole, a geotechnical engineer. So, I just left this last slide blank for us to kind of think, what were our learnings, and what do we recommend? Can we open it up for just some thoughts?
Well, to me, that looked like a pretty good explanation of what could happen. I guess we may not ever know what did happen, but the bottom line is, you know, that was the first time we've ever had, at least from recent memory, a sinkhole in that area, and then that's the first time that we've ever really had that much precipitation that led to whatever that was. And then, where they put the pumps, you know, that was a random kind of thing, made sense to whoever did it. Obviously, that's not a bad thing, it's just like, oh, so this is what happened.
Yeah.
It does make sense, I guess.
Yeah, that's probably one of the deepest places in the parking lot, and it's not too far from the river where they're trying to discharge, so it makes sense that they did that. But I would not, I would recommend not doing it in the future. But I would recommend not doing it in the future.
Nick, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
I appreciate the fact that the staff worked as quickly as you did, and you did define it as an emergency to take care of things. Appreciate that very much, and I know that was stressed in the report. One of the questions that came at the last city council meeting, the reason that we're sitting here today referred to us, the question was, I think to Iris, was the Army Corps of Engineers contacted? Would you explain maybe an answer and the logic, whether it was or not, and how that might play in? I was curious, because I didn't feel like after the city council meeting, I really understood the answer or why the question was asked.
Certainly. Jurisdictions for Army Corps is generally defined as waters of the United States, so the definition of it is, falls into eight categories, and generally it's navigable water, something that is used for commerce, rivers, San Gabriel River, for example, from the mouth all the way to the 22, what they call the Seventh Street Bridge, that's considered within the Army Corps jurisdiction. However, specifically in the parking lot, it is not within their purview.
Okay. So it wasn't a matter of the city spending money on a consultant when we could have had some service done by a government agency?
Correct. This is not within their purview, so it's not something that they would respond to.
Okay, thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
My other question is sort of based on what we've heard so far, and that is, we don't know whether this will happen again, we don't know exactly why it happened, and I appreciate all the work that you did in putting together the presentation, Susan. But I guess I would ask staff, based on what did happen, but the little bit that we do know, and the report that we've received and all the rest, is there anything that you would do different if this happened again? Did you learn anything? Should we have learned something from this experience?
There, I don't believe that the declaration of an emergency would change. Absolutely, we would have done the same thing. We do feel that public safety and preservation of our city property is a priority, and therefore declaration was made, and to make that repair was a matter of an emergency, and just like Board Member Perel rightfully pointed out. Soil migration is very complex, and geotechnical engineering for the most part is a lot of based on deduction of available material and information. We could have said that and pointed out to various hypotheses, and we could hypothesize how the soil migrated, but we could only guess. So if there is any concern about like the placement of the pumps, for sure, I mean, you know what, if it's a millionth of a possibility, let's move it, let's not risk it. However, our reaction to what happened, I don't think that we would be changing it at all.
And were you satisfied that the report that was provided to city covered enough information, was thorough enough to answer whatever questions people might have?
I think that from a purely engineering and just pure science perspective, there is never enough, I guess, and there's never an end. However, this is adequate data to ascertain that we are comfortable with the parking lot's condition at this current moment.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan?
I have, I think one thing that I might recommend is that if at all possible, if we ever, if we had a sinkhole or some similar situation where we really wanted to get a geotechnical engineer to take a look, I would try and get them out the next day, or, you know, within a day or two, and I think that's pretty possible. I know we have a contract with Stan Tech, and they have a lot of geotechnical engineers, and those folks usually show up really quick. So, you know, another recommendation I would have is, let's not fill it in before we take a look at it, try and learn what we can. You know, sometimes you can see a conduit there in the hole, or somewhere near it, or at least you can understand what the soils look like, and anyway, just a recommendation. I don't know if you all agree with that, that we could put that forward. And then finally, on the report itself, I wouldn't really call it a geotechnical report, it was just a geophysics report. There wasn't really much geotechnical information in there at all, it was just the ground penetrating radar survey, which is part of a geotechnical study or geotechnical report. So, and the report should have, you know, the date, when the data was collected, I didn't see that in there, the purpose, the setting, the hydrogeologic setting, the historical setting, what might be in the subsurface that we might be looking for, and therefore, you know, you design your survey based on what you're looking for and what your purpose is, and there was no discussion about how they designed the survey, or their sampling interval, or anything else, it was just, I guess, random, I don't know. So design parameters are important, and then I think the survey should include some recommendations. I think we should have gotten them out way sooner, because it was like over a month before we did the survey, and I guess meanwhile, there were all these heavy trucks driving in there to fill in the hole, they could have collapsed in another hole. So just, you know, doing that quickly, and also finally, including some of the data, like the radar profiles, they wouldn't have to put them all in, but just an example, you know, this is typical of what we saw there, it would be very helpful to let people see what they can, can't see. So those are my recommendations, if we ever have to hire a geotechnical firm to do this kind of a study for us in the future.
All right.
The only other comment I might have is, you know, there's other parking lots that are underlaid with sand. I guess every place around here is underlaid with sand, so I guess it just maybe would require that the surface be inspected from time to time after a rain event, you know, as they're doing, like when they do the sand movements for the fall and the winter, you know, when they put the heavy equipment over those particular areas. I know that they're going to go directly over them, but, you know, there are a lot of areas that could be underlaid with the same kind of issue there, because I know all the parking lots flood to some extent. I'm not sure that's a big deal, because that's been happening forever. But just in this particular instance, in this particular parking lot, it does seem that that pump might have had some more to do with it, which I didn't anticipate, but that was a good point.
You got to take, a lot of soil was removed, a lot, if you guys, I mean, it's got to go somewhere, it's got to get through, you know, there's all soil around, it just can't, you can't take that much soil out unless there's some kind of conduit to send it out to the river, or send it to the beach, or send it to some void. And we didn't see that from a geophysical survey, a conduit, a broken pipe, you know, an empty basement, or, you know, we didn't really see all these underground structures that could have taken that soil and moved it somewhere underground. And that, again, leads me to think that it could have been the pump. And we just don't know, I agree, it's just, it's very complicated. But I don't know if I'd recommend that we, you know, do surveys in all the parking lots after a storm or anything like that, because we have to remember, for this sinkhole to occur, a lot of soil got removed and it went somewhere, and it had to get, it had to have a way to get somewhere. So it's probably not going to happen just from a rain.
Does the staff have any concerns or comments, based on what we've just been talking about?
No, I don't think we do. Thank you, Board Member Scholter, and thank you very much for being our interim chair for the meeting tonight, I appreciate the pinch hit. At the next EQCB meeting, we will elect a chair.
So I understand that what we're being asked to do is to move to have the report, receive and file the report, that's what?
That's the official action, yes.
Official action for this?
I'll make that motion.
I second, but can we also make some recommendations as well?
It is up to the board, if you would like to come to any consensus, otherwise, you know, we've certainly been here to listen to your thoughts and comments, but if you wanted to make something a part of your motion as a recommendation to the city council, you can absolutely do that.
Maybe we could circulate these recommendations and see if there's some others anyone wants to add. I think that's our job, is to protect the environment, you know, and do, make recommendations that are protective of our environment, so I think we should not just receive the report, but comment on it. That's just my, that would be my recommendation.
What sort of recommendations do we have? What do you suggest?
Well, I think others, including myself, said maybe next time we won't, we'll put the pumps, you know, and we'll think more about putting the pumps further away from pervious sediment loose materials. If, you know, that would be one. Maybe trying to have an engineering firm come in earlier to take a look before we fill, that would be another. Maybe doing the ground penetrating radar survey before we open the parking lot up to traffic, if possible, might be one. And then some of those suggestions on what we'd like to see in those reports, so we can draw better conclusions from the report, it's pretty limited.
So one of the things I'm kind of going back and forth in my mind is, we could have the report received and filed by the board. All of this discussion has been recorded, and so city staff is aware of it. The one thing I don't want to do is to get into micromanaging the actual step-by-step process for city staff when something like this does happen. And so that would be my one hesitation in putting together specific recommendations, as you identified. And I don't mean to say that they're not great, they're fantastic ideas, but I just don't want to tie the hands of the city staff in moving forward, and that would be my, just my thinking.
Maybe our recommendation would be to ask city staff to incorporate some of these thoughts into their own processes and procedures, you know, and make their own decisions based on our recommendations. Let them have our recommendations incorporate those into their standard operating procedures as they see fit. Maybe that's, then we're not telling them what to do, we're just making recommendations that might improve their, I mean, every time you have a process, or every time you go through something, if it's the first time you do it, it's not going to be as good as the second time, if you learn and change your process and improve it, continual improvement and everything we do, I hope we all do that, right? So it's just an opportunity for us to make a suggestion and not micromanage, not make it a rule or a law or something, but just say, hey, here's some thoughts, maybe you can use these next time.
Maybe use another word like consideration, or just awareness.
Interim chair, if I could make a, if I could make a comment. In terms of a formal recommendation, you would be making it to the city council. So you might want to think about how, you might want to structure that if it's a recommendation, you know, your role as a board is to make recommendations to the city council. So it wouldn't be directing staff.
Yeah.
So how, you know, kind of how you might want to think about that in terms of wording or something like that, but, you know, as we've said, we've got, you know, half of our engineering staff sitting right here and have certainly been listening to your suggestions.
Yeah. Hopefully, you're going to stay on staff for a while, at least until next storm season.
So Alexa, when staff prepares for city council, the report that is making this, the recommendation, whatever this word comes up with, would it be possible for a discussion of just the few recommendations that we've talked about to be part of that staff report to the city council, so that it would be recorded that way? Would that be an avenue to pursue?
I think that all the comments that were received today are noted, and appreciate that everybody's spending the time to discuss it, and I do agree that there is value to debrief afterwards. There's always something that can be learned, so how we're going to, we could definitely look into this and incorporate it into our overall O and M for whatever, and hopefully it won't happen again. But it is, of course, up to this body to determine how you want to make a recommendation, if any formal recommendation to council moving forward.
Yeah, I think we should just keep it simple. I'm a little bit uncomfortable that we're getting beyond the purview of what I think this board is supposed to do by giving specific recommendations to our public works department. We have staff, I trust them, I think they've done a good job here. I think we should just make this motion and move on.
Maybe we add the comment that we think they did a good job here, too, working out in the middle of the night and all that, so pretty impressive.
So we have a motion, we have a second, I believe the motion was seconded?
Yep.
By Donald, so shall we take the vote?
What was the motion again? Repeat that.
The motion was to accept the report as submitted.
To receive and file.
Receive and file it.
I guess what I would maybe, like to add maybe a little bit, or for you to consider maybe one more thing would be, to receive and file the report, making mention of the recommendations in the staff report to city council when that comes up, something to that effect. I know I'm kind of using too many words, but I don't want to lose what it is that we talked about tonight, and I don't want to get it buried, so I'm not sure exactly how to do that.
Yeah, but I don't think we'll lose it, because the people that would lose it are here, and they're hearing it. I don't know that the city council persons hearing it will do anything more for the city and for our environment. These are the people that are involved, and they heard it, and I'm sure they took it to heart, and next time around, they'll make those considerations. Unless there's a need for this committee to appear as though it's, you know, sending something back to the council that I'm kind of unaware of, being new.
I think my councilperson would appreciate knowing what our recommendations were. I think that's why she appointed me, to think these things and be my best, and do my best, and try and improve things in the city, that's all. So, yeah.
I think the recommendations should be noted, you know, and they're just recommendations.
Okay, noted, but that's not part of the motion, but noted in the staff report to city council? Is that what you are referring to?
Yeah, I mean, just incorporate the comments that we've made, and they've obviously received those, so it should just be noted that we made internal, or however you want to describe it, recommendations, and they will address them on their own terms.
So it's not a direction to staff, so that's just, okay.
But we do need to respond as if we're representatives of the council, which I certainly agree that, and that's our job. So as long as we do that, then that information has been transferred, and I think that completes what we're supposed to do.
All right. So we have a motion, we have a second. Are we satisfied with what's been discussed so we can vote?
Yep.
All right. Would you like to take the roll call for the vote?
Certainly, thank you. Board Member Messetti?
Yes.
Board Member Perel?
Yes.
Board Member Scholter?
Yes.
Board Member Horning?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, thank you very much.
Anything else? Otherwise, it's time to adjourn the meeting of the Environmental Quality Control Board. Thank you very much for your presentation and everybody's participation. Thank you.